2:00 PM in conference room 325. First on the agenda, we have SB 1333, SD 2 relating to the Uniform Controlled Substances Act. We have two testifiers today. First up is the Public Safety Division in support.
Sure. Good afternoon. Jared Ridola, the State Narcotics Administrator, will stand on our written testimony in support.
Thank you. Next up, we have the Akamai Cannabis Clinic in support.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee, Dr. Clifton Otto, Medical Cannabis Specialist in Hawaii. I stand on my written testimony and I will be available if there are questions about the proposal in my testimony that is meant to harmonize the state and federal regulation of cannabis, which I believe is in line with the intent of this bill. Thank you. I will be available if there are any questions.
Thank you. Members, any questions? Seeing none, moving on to SB 1323, SD 2 relating to the Department of Hawaiian Homelands. We have one testifier today, the Department of Hawaiian Homelands with comments.
All right. Anai Kakuo Chair Nakashima Vice Chair, members of the committee, the department reiterate portions of its comments in that the department already has a comprehensive planning process in place that incorporates beneficiary concerns and we think that large and in part the proposed strategic plan is redundant in terms of the department's existing efforts. That said, we last month released a beneficiary study that indicates that the majority of beneficiaries would like a single-family home and if not a single-family home, the majority of them would like a vacant lot with infrastructure on it. As we've talked about quite frequently in this legislative session, that comes at a minimum cost of four and a half billion dollars to this department. And so I would reiterate that all of the department's planning already focuses on how best to address the waitlist and we do, we're already doing much of that work.
Okay, thank you. Members, any questions? Report.
D H L question. What is your strategic plan say in regards when the waitlist will come under control or be manageable? Or when it actually disappears ideally?
The strategic plan itself doesn't put out a timeline. However, we can estimate that based on current output, it'll take us nearly 182 years to address the waitlist based on existing funding levels and the existing land inventory available to the department.
Could you repeat that number? Did you say 182 years?
Conservatively, yes.
You mean it could be 200 and above?
I, I hope not. You know, being 100 years into the act, we hope that it's not 200 and we'll continue to make attempts to bring that down. But that does require generating additional revenue and gaining the revenue to purchase additional ads just to meet the infrastructural needs for beneficiary demand.
Given that baseline number 182 years, that's, that's conservative but apt. What does that suggest in terms of funding and in terms of what I guess now is? How many houses per year are you, are you projected to do in your, in your strategic plan existing?
I think over the next five years, we're set to produce maybe 1,200 lots over the next five years.
If you then look at the blood quantum and you project out the dilution, the, I guess, the diminution of it over the next 182 years, do you have any Hawaiians who would actually be eligible to take the?
I report, we're getting a little off topic.
But, but, but this is very important. If they're going to do 182 years on the waitlist, there's already a dilution, diminution of the, the blood quantum. So in effect, they're going to work themselves out of business. They're going to work themselves out of business, my point. So another point, the point is they need a strategic plan and what they've got doesn't take into consideration the question that you're not asking, allowing me to ask.
I, with all due respect, Representative Ward, I would say that the strategic planning takes into consideration the resources that are available to the department. So it's not to say that we're faced with a 182-year problem and we're not best planning for how to solve that. The strategic plan assesses the availability of our resources and our ability to extend that as far as possible. And so, like I said, the strategic plan doesn't necessarily calculate how many years it would take, but if we looked at current production rates, that's how we get to that number.
But there are intermediate statistics that suggest 20 to 30 years, you may not have 50% blood quantum Hawaiians. Therefore, the issue.
Okay, let's move on. Representative Nakamura, did you have a question?
Thank you, Vice Chair. I have a question for D H L. I just wanted to know, is, is it possible to get a copy of your current strategic plan?
I believe it's on our website, but you know what, Representative Nakamura, we'll make that available and we'll, we'll make sure we get that to you.
Thank you.
Members, any other questions? Now we'll move on to SB 238, SB 2 relating to the Office of Hawaiian Affairs. First up, we have the Office of Elections with comments.
Thank you. The Office of Elections with written testimony providing comments and behalf of the attorney question.
Okay, thank you. Next up, we have Common Cause Hawaii with comments.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. We stand on our written comments. If you have any questions, I'm here to answer. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Members, any questions? Seeing none, moving on to SB 1409, SD 2 relating to training and native Hawaiian rights. First up, we have BLNR in opposition.
Hi, this is Pua Yu for the Department of Land and Natural Resources. We stand on our testimony in opposition. Sorry, I can't turn my video on.
Thank you. And sorry, everyone, I forgot to announce that there, there is a two-minute limit on testimony. Next up, we have Kahuliau Native Hawaiian Law Center at UH Richardson in support. Professor Sprott, are you there? She's there.
Oops. Can you hear me now? Oh, I'm sorry about that. Aloha Chair Nakashima, Vice Chair Matayoshi, members of the committee. I'm Kapua Sprott and I'm testifying today on behalf of Kahuliau Center for Excellence in Native Hawaiian Law at the University of Va'ia'at Manoa's William S. Richardson School of Law. We partner with OHA in facilitating the Native Hawaiian law trainings that issue in this bill. We stand on our written testimony in support, but I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have. Mahalo.
Thank you. Next up, we have Kua'a Ina Ulu, aloha, sorry about that, aloha in support.
Awa'amo, thank you. Aloha, my name is Kevin Chang. I'm a co-director for Kua'a Ina Ulu Awa'amo. I just feel that this bill makes sense to me. I mean, as leaders and decision-makers in our community, we should be understanding why we make decisions and how we should be thinking about our culture, our community, our environment. And other than that, we stand on our testimony. Mahalo.
Thank you. Next up, we have the Office of Hawaiian Affairs in support.
Aloha Chair Nakashima, Vice Chair Matayoshi, members of the committee. Leitani Peltier on behalf of the Office of Hawaiian Affairs testifying in support of SB 1409, SD 2, which would provide an enforcement mechanism to the mandate of Act 169. So the Native Hawaiian Law Training Course provides important legal, historical, and cultural context directly relevant to the state's obligations to native Hawaiians and the public trust. And a broad understanding of these fiduciary duties is especially important for board and commission members whose decisions directly impact Native Hawaiian rights, the public land trust, as well as our public, precious public trust resources. And of course, this was the impetus for Act 169. And the training has been very well received and we really, mahalo Kahuliau for doing such an excellent job implementing the training. In the past, Kahuliau has gone out of their way to conduct trainings on the neighbor islands and recently due to COVID-19, they've started doing online trainings as well. And this is something that both OHA and Kahuliau are very excited about. Now that we've piloted, piloted two very successful online trainings and we have the tools to make this training even more accessible, especially for neighbor island boards and commissions. But at the end of the day, if there's no enforcement mechanism, then as important as this training is, it just won't be a high priority as it should be. And I doubt we would ever fully comply with the mandate of Act 169. And so we owe it to the people of Hawaii to ensure that our decision-makers are fully equipped with tools and knowledge to carry out their legal duties. Mahalo Nui for the opportunity to testify in this measure.
Thank you. Members, any questions? Rep Nakamura.
Hi, I have a question for Kapua. Well, I just wanted to ask you, because of COVID, how, how has that affected your ability to provide this training?
Thank you, Rep Nakamura. Actually, because of COVID, are opua?
Well, I think, I think it's kapua.
Okay. Oh, sorry about that. I wasn't sure whether you're asking pua or kapua, but kapua on behalf of Kahuliau. I'm happy to let you know that actually since COVID, our first training after COVID, we had one of our highest training numbers ever. We transitioned to a online virtual format via Zoom. And that, that, that training we did in August of 2020. And so it was still sort of at the, at the beginning phases of the pandemic, I would say, when folks were still getting adjusted to the online format. But we had, you know, great participation, great comments and, and effusive feedback. So I would say that it's been very successful. We've had more requests. I think a substantial portion of the comments were requesting longer training, additional days. In fact, offering advanced courses for folk, for decision-makers who had already taken the additional course, I mean, the initial course, but would like more training. So thank you for that question. I'm happy to answer any additional ones you may have.
Follow-up question. So, you know, Department of Land and Natural Resources raised a lot of concerns about how this would affect the work of their various boards and commissions with the drastic step of just, you know, being, not being able to participate if they do not complete the training within the 12-month period. So I was just wondering, are there, and the concern is that if it's offered twice a year and people come in in between the training or so forth, that it might be difficult to, you know, to get everyone trained, but I was just wondering, is there anything in between, you know, step that could be taken that would not impede the work of these various boards and commissions, but would accomplish what you're trying to achieve?
Mahalo for that question, Rep Nakamura. I think it's a, it's a very good and a, and a really important issue. And the bottom line is that we would be happy to work, we have and we will continue to be happy to work with BLNR and any of the other entities or agencies that might have an issue. In part, why we started going out to the neighbor islands is because we had requests from various counties. And so, for example, our, our first training on Kauai was because the county of Kauai requested that we come there. And so we did. Then Hawaii County requested that we come there and we did. We were in the process of working with Maui County when the pandemic came out and so we transitioned to online. And so I hear the concern and as someone who regularly practices before boards and commissions, I understand the importance of, and who I'm actually, in my spare time, I'm also the Vice Chair of the City and County of Honolulu Board of Water Supply. And so I understand the importance of being able to effective, to make sure you have quorum, to be able to effectively participate. I would also say that as someone who has facilitated in every single Native Hawaiian law, has facilitated at least one session in every single Native Hawaiian law training that we have done since 2013 and then since 2015, when Act 169 was passed, that personally I can see the, the difference that it makes for decision-makers who are perhaps may not be aware of the culture and context of Hawaii and the specific fiduciary duties that they owe under the public land trust and the various constitutional provisions. And so while I hear DLNR's concerns and while I, I am as the person who is responsible for the contract under OHA and the person who helps to make the decisions to facilitate them on our side, well, we're happy to work with them. I also see the significant benefits of people who have gone through the trainings, both as a trainer. So reading the evaluations, seeing the impact, and also as an attorney who continues to regularly appear before these boards and to see the quality and the information of the, the quality of the questions and information being raised by the decision-makers. So, yeah, we're happy to continue to work with BLNR and are also happy to consider other options. There was a bill to increase the number of trainings offered from two to four. Kahuliau would be happy to offer additional trainings as long as we have the funds to be able to do that.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Members, if you'll indulge me with a follow-up question to Professor Sprott. We're both attorneys. We have to do continuing legal education classes. A lot of the times, if you can't catch it live, you can watch the video for the same amount of credit. Has this been done or attempted for these trainings? I mean, I do understand that it's better to attend them live so you can ask questions, but if you could make the video available and your email available to ask any questions that board members might have, I feel like that would be pretty much the same as CLEs in the legal sector. So has that been considered?
Mahalo, Rep Matayoshi. Yes, we have considered that and, and are happy to, we've discussed that with OHA because they're the ones who actually contracted us to do that. And our two sessions that we did via Zoom were actually recorded and we had, we had lots of requests for people to be able to view them. The issue has been ensuring that people actually attend for the full 50 minutes. Now, as, when we're authorized to provide the CLEs as, or the continuing legal education as a provider, we need to certify that each person has actually watched it for the 50 minutes. And so we need to work on that technology to ensure that we were, that we'd be able to do that. For example, as you know, when you watch CLEs, they have the things that pop up partway through that you have to click to prove that you're still there and watching it. And so we're happy to consider that as an option and we're happy to work with OHA in order to make that happen. I know that in the past, there has been a concern about the value and importance of, of having the face-to-face exchange with decision-makers and also some concern about the Q and A, but to the degree that we're able to record the educational piece only, we're certainly open to working with OHA to try to find a way to make that happen.
Thank you. Members, any other questions? If not, let's move on to SB 765, SD 2 relating to operating a vehicle under the influence of an intoxicant. First up, we have the Public Defenders in opposition.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. The Public Defender's Office stands on our testimony in opposition. We are available for questions later. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Honolulu Prosecutor's Office in support.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee, Deputy Prosecutor Tishin Akamatsu on behalf of the Honolulu Prosecuting Attorney's Department. We are in support of the bill. You have our written testimony before you, so we won't go, I won't go into detail, but we would like to highlight one thing that was taken out of the bill by our committee that the emission interlock should be or shall be installed in at least one registered. in at least one registered vehicle for every offender who's actually convicted of the charge. We do feel that that is an important component, because one of the weaknesses that we found in the current ignition interlock program is that currently only 20%, approximately 20%, give or take, every year, actually get it installed, because currently it hinges on that where it operates, every vehicle you operate. So in theory, someone could just say, well, I'm not going to operate a vehicle for the next year or two years, however long their revocation is, and/or perhaps more legitimate reason, I don't have a vehicle to operate. But of course, those people wouldn't be required if they have no registered vehicle under the original language of this bill either. So that, if you consider that a loophole, people being able to say, I'm just not going to operate a car for the next duration of the revocation, we feel that that was the main reason why we currently only have 20%, even though it's technically mandated of all offenders. So we're available for questions if any. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next up, we have HPD in support.
Good afternoon, Vice Chair, members of the committee. Major Calvin Tong with the Honolulu Police Department. We stand by our testimony in support of this bill.
Yeah, thank you. Members, any questions?
Just one quick question for the prosecutor. Can you remind us, how much does it cost now for the ignition interlock device?
1,400.
1,400. Thank you.
About, there is an indigent program, though. Okay, members, any other questions?
Thank you, Chair. A question for the Defender's Office, Public Defender's Office?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, I assume you're, am I muted? This is working. Okay. I assume your concerns with that are similar to the previous bill that the House passed out. This isn't a companion, but does it have to do with, if I read this correctly, if you don't own a car, in order to ever get your license back, you have to purchase a car to get this in a car to get your license back?
That was the House version of the bill. This bill apparently does not have that language. It's basically, this bill, as the prosecutor indicated, you can basically opt out of having an ignition interlock if you don't have a car or you're not going to operate a car. And I think that this is the better law. I understand that the stats that they stated that 20% of the only install cars, but I guess the goal is, we want them off the street. You know, we don't want them driving for a year or two years, or I guess the law proposes multiple, you know, even higher and longer than that. We have laws to punish people and punish severely those people who drive without ignition interlocks during their revocation period. So I think that's sufficient deterrent to keep them off the streets. Otherwise, I understand Representative Matayoshi said there is an indigent, I don't know if there's so much of a program, but there's a discount being offered, like 50% discount, which is still substantial. And if you don't own a car, I don't know what you're going to do at that point, you know. So I think that the way this bill is written is it's a good balance as to having, you know, allowing people the opportunity to drive with ignition interlock or keep people off the road because of their crime.
Thanks, thanks very much. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Members, any other questions? Now, we'll move on to SB 459 SD1 relating to firearms. General's Office in support.
And good afternoon, Chair Nakashima, members of the committee. I'm Deputy Attorney General Amy Murakami for the Department of the Attorney General. The department strongly supports this bill. This bill would give the department the statutory authority, an ability to promulgate rules to develop and implement a statewide program to issue firearm qualification certifications to qualified retired law enforcement officers to carry concealed firearms in Hawaii pursuant to the Federal Law Enforcement Officer Safety Act, which is commonly referred to as the LSA. The bill also requires qualified law enforcement officers and qualified retired law enforcement officers to carry a concealed weapon pursuant to LSA to comply with Hawaii's firearm laws. The department will create a program that would be well-regulated and operated uniformly throughout the state with public safety as a priority. The department respectfully requests that the committee passes bill, and I am available for questions. Thank you.
Thank you, members. We have a number of individuals submitting testimony, most in opposition, a couple in support. Only one has indicated they want to testify today. Meredith Buck in opposition.
Aloha, my name is Meredith Buck. I'm a resident of Kailua'ana, and I just want to stand on my written testimony and strong opposition. Mahalo Nui.
Thank you. Members, any questions?
Yes, I have a question. For Attorney General.
Yes, Chair.
I'm wondering, in your testimony, you didn't indicate any community benefit to this bill. And I was wondering what the benefits would be for providing this opportunity.
So, under the federal law, retired law enforcement officers can carry concealed weapons required to get a firearm certification every year. One of the ways is that the state provides a certification, and if the state provides a certification, we can set the requirements, the qualification requirements. So the benefit to the public is that we can ensure that these persons who are carrying these concealed weapons are properly qualified to operate firearms, that we do check their mental health. We have them pass a physical examination. So the program that the department would run would continue to try to make sure to balance the LSA law with the need to ensure that these people are properly qualified to carry these firearms.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Questions for the same person?
Yes, Representative.
Under law, can active-duty law enforcement conceal carry?
Yes, under LSA law, if there, there's some departmental requirements, I believe. But there is a concealed carry law for active duty.
So there, I think the public good is perhaps more clear. I didn't quite catch what the public good is for hired law enforcement. Also, this bill doesn't seem to speak to, what about ex-military or ex-military police? Would that be included?
Yes, so under the federal LSA law, if you are, you meet the definition of law enforcement, then you qualify under the law to conceal carry. So there's a list of qualifications, but military police can qualify as well as retired military police.
Do we have an active number or a number of how many we're talking about, that all of a sudden the state would allow to be armed?
I don't have the numbers offhand. So the Department of the Attorney General has been doing the firearm certifications for a number of years. What the department is seeking is, because the federal law does not specify who in the state would be the one to provide certification, the department is seeking the statutory authority to say that the Department of the Attorney General would be the one to provide these firearm certifications and to create a program that has administrative rules to run it by.
But this bill doesn't even speak to reciprocity. It doesn't even seem to speak, in my reading, to who is and who is not included. And so what you're saying is, as the Attorney General's Office, please give us the authority to choose, pick and choose how we do reciprocity, who gets it, who doesn't.
Actually, under the retired LSA law, what it states is that if you're retired, if you're retired LSA, that meets the qualifications, this is what allows you to carry this concealed firearm throughout all of the states.
Right.
So it's not a formal reciprocity, but rather a national carry, basically. I'm sorry.
So correct me if I'm wrong. So my understanding of this is, if it were to become law, as the state with the second highest veteran population in the country, and as one of the number one tourist destinations in the country, we would suddenly be arming an unknown number of people in this state to walk around concealed carry, including potentially thousands who aren't even residents in Hawaii. Because if they come on vacation here, and they happen to be a cop in Oklahoma, they can walk around armed, but citizens in our state, law-abiding citizens in our state, given the hurdles that we have placed in front of them, wouldn't be allowed. Am I wrong?
So regardless of whether or not this law passes, that situation that you're talking about, where someone who's a police officer in Oklahoma, that person can, under the LSA law, can carry concealed carry in Hawaii under the LSA law. This is of this program. This program is to allow residents of Hawaii who are retired law enforcement officers who meet the qualifications under the LSA law to conceal, to get their annual firearm certification and carry a concealed weapon.
I think I misunderstood you. Did you just say that somebody who is a retired law enforcement from another state on the mainland, while in the case in Europe, already can concealed carry?
That is what the federal LSA law is about. It's if a person is qualified under the federal LSA law, they can carry that firearm interstate.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Vice Chair.
Thank you. Members, any other questions? Now, let's move on to SB 385 relating to the Uniform Trust Code. First up, we have the Commission to Promote Uniform Legislation in Support. Mr. Oshiro, are you there? Nope. Okay, not present. In that case, we have nobody. Let's move on to SB 829 relating to abuse of family or household members. First up, we have Office of Public Defender in opposition.
Aloha, Chair Nakashima, members of the committee. The Office of the Public Defender, sorry, my name is Darcia Forster. I'm a deputy public defender. The Office of the Public Defender strongly opposes Senate Bill 829 SD1. We have outlined in our written testimony a number of serious issues we have with this measure. However, I would like to highlight that we have constitutional concerns about the overbroad language, the overbroad definitions, and the overbroad scope of the measure based on the definition of coercive control. We strongly urge the committee to look closely at the definition in HRS Section 586-1 and review our written testimony. We provide numerous examples of how a law-abiding citizen can get caught up in the criminal justice system and accused of a crime of abuse based on behavior that perhaps should not be criminalized. We understand the intent, but this measure as currently written may criminalize normal disagreements that family and household members engage in every day. We're also not, we are also very concerned about the ease that this measure as currently written may be used as a weapon to further establish power and control by an abuser over appearance, a person who is experiencing abuse. Thank you very much. I'll be available for questions.
Thank you. Next up, we have Honolulu Prosecutor's Office in opposition.
Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee, Deputy Prosecuting Attorney Mark Tom for the Prosecuting Attorney's Office. I believe it's, we do oppose, but it's more, just more expressing concerns of Senate Bill 829. We will stand on our written testimony, basically expressing concerns, but understand the intent of the bill. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have HPD with comments.
Good afternoon, Vice Chair, Chair and members of the committee. I'm Randall Platt, Captain with the Honolulu Police Department. We have submitted written testimony expressing our concerns with this bill, and I won't go over them here. But other than to say that this may be one of the rare occasions when we also stand with the Public Defender's Office and also the Prosecutor's Office, in that we are very concerned over the overly broad language, especially as it relates to coercive control, and that it would, it seems that many people can be caught up in a web of this, when it really doesn't necessarily apply to them. So again, we find the language to be overly broad, particularly with reference to coercive control. I'll be available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Hawaii State Coalition Against Domestic Violence in support.
Good afternoon, Chair Nakashima and Vice Chair Matayoshi and committee members. Angelina Murakato for the Hawaii State Coalition Against Domestic Violence, and we are in support of this measure. I recognize that the Public Defender's Prosecuting Attorney's Office, as well as HPD, has some concerns about the broad language and how it may be used for people who, for whom it's just how they behave within their relationship. But I'd like to point out that we want to make sure that there is, that we identify that there is an intent over power and control over a person. And we also invite the committee to look at the Centers for Disease Control definition and how they consider coercive control in their very, very extensive work on intimate partner violence, how it's used in their studies, and how this has become part of the data that they use to address interventions and the prevention of intimate partner violence. So while there may be concern about the people who get caught up in this unintentionally, what are we going to do about the people for whom this is a reality, for whom this is real cases of intimate partner violence? And are we basically saying to that community of people that only if you get beaten up physically and brutally, that you get the right to justice, or only when you get to that point? Thank you.
Thank you. That's all the testifiers and members. Seeing none, we're moving on to SB 1260 SD1 relating to criminal pretrial reform. First up, we have the Hawaii Correctional System Oversight Commission in support. Judge Barra, are you there? Not present. Next up, we have the Office of the Public Defender in support.
Good afternoon, Representatives. William Bagasol, Deputy Public Defender. We are in support of SD 1260. Our position is that, well, has somewhat changed in that we wish to proceed with Section 2 of SB 1260 and perhaps leaving Section 3 for a different time. We would like to focus in on lower, nonviolent crimes, and hopefully, this type of phased-in, measured type of approach may be more palatable and more productive. And because of that, we support the position that's taken by the Office of Hawaiian Affairs. And I understand that they submitted a proposed SD 1260, SD1 HD1 for your consideration. Other than that, we thank you, I thank you for your time, and I remain for questions at the end.
Thank you. Next up, we have the Prosecutor's Office, Honolulu Prosecutors in opposition.
Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee, Deputy Prosecuting Attorney Mark Tom for the Department of the Prosecuting Attorney's Office. The department does stand in opposition. The department first just would address the public defender's position. We do appreciate the understanding of Section 3 and taking that out, or at least suggesting possibly not proceeding forward on that. As in our testimony, we did address that it could lead to more backlog in the court system. I know our testimony at least is on file in addressing 1260 SD1. I did get a chance. I did get a chance to look at the proposed draft that was posted online, uh, by OHA. Some of the things that we would note, at least to, for the committee to address is, uh, when we're talking about adding in nonviolent classy felonies, there's a number of types of cases that might not really be cons- the general public might not consider as nonviolent, but, um, you know, technically they would be nonviolent. Some of the offenses we're looking at is burglary, promoting gambling, aggravated harassment by stalking, uh, P D D threes, arson, a lot of cases involving minors. So we would just let the committee know that there are some concerns when we're just lumping a lot of these offenses into just nonviolent classy felonies. Additionally, I think there's some areas where, um, they address not really what the, uh, the purpose of bail is, and they ask for it to address more individual, if the person is a danger to an individual specifically or a specific group of people. I think protecting the general public is, is kind of what we're looking at. And, um, having that in there is, is very important because a lot of charges such as promoting gambling or other charges does not address the single individual, but addresses just the, the general public at large. So something for the committee to recognize. Um, another is, um, changing the history of non-appearance, which is basically a bench warrant, not showing up to court to a pattern of convictions for non-appearance. I think this is just a little misleading in the sense that the, the, the department does not routinely prosecute on the bench warrants. We mostly dismiss these, what, what will basically come up as a criminal contempt of court. I'm not showing up court. So having a pattern of convictions is very rare, just because we don't prosecute convictions. I will, um, end at this time and will be present for questions.
Okay, thank you. Next up, we have Common Cause Hawaii with comments.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, Members of the Committee, Sandy Ma for Common Cause Hawaii. We stand our comments in support of S B twelve sixty and are available to answer questions if any. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Community Alliance on Prisons in support.
Aloha. Aloha. Kat Brady testifying on behalf of Community Alliance on Prisons. Always mindful that we have about forty one hundred people who are currently incarcerated with a thousand of them or more serving their time thousands of miles away from their homeland, their families, their loved ones, and for most of the people in Saguaro, Kanakamali, far, far from their ancestral lands. We support, um, definitely eliminating bail for low level offenses. I asked the Department of Public Safety way back last year when I got a question asking, how many people are incarcerated who were, um, unsheltered, living unsheltered at the time of arrest? And I was told after, um, intake services went through their whole file for intakes for twenty twenty, that forty percent of the people who were incarcerated statewide were actually reported living unsheltered or in emergency or transitional shelters. So what we're doing is we're really criminalizing poverty and that should not happen in the land of aloha. We believe that, um, OHA actually submitted a more reasonable draft. We, we agree with deleting section three because the bill is really about nonviolence, not about serious offenses. And we think that criminalizing poverty just clogs up the system and it ruins people's lives. Even a few days in jail can actually impact somebody lifelong. So we respectfully ask the committee to pass, um, OHA's H D one. Mahalo.
Okay, thank you. Next up, we have the Office of Hawaiian Affairs in support.
Aloha, Representatives, Commander Maldonado for the Office of Hawaiian Affairs. Uh, we stand in strong support of bail reform measures like this. You know, as you know, this is a very kind of measured approach that we've been taking, kind of stretching out bail reform over years. Um, we do urge the legislature to take this one additional small step toward a more just system. Um, as you know, as was mentioned before, we have attached a draft to our testimony and also based on some conversations that we had yesterday to respond to some of the concerns about, um, the felony offenses that may be, you know, currently the, the bill would exclude offenses, um, that would be violent. And so it kind of lists all the violent offenses. Um, there were some concerns that were raised about some offenses that are felonies but are, um, not violent technically, but could become violent. Uh, so we did recommend a couple of small changes to the draft that we had previously publicly submitted. Um, and that should be in your email inboxes from, uh, last evening as well as this morning. Um, and so we will just remain available for questions. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you. Next up, we have E C L U of Hawaii with comments.
Aloha, Chair, Vice Chair, Members of the Committee, Mandy Fernandez on behalf of the American Civil Liberties Union of Hawaii. Uh, we've offered written comments on this measure. We'll stand on our testimony and ask that the committee adopt the draft proposed by the Office of Hawaiian Affairs. I'll also note that the purpose of bail is to ensure a person's appearance in court. A person is not less dangerous to the general community simply because they have more money and can therefore afford their cash bail. Uh, thank you, and we're available for questions.
Okay, thank you. Next up, we have the Hawaii Health and Harm Reduction Center in support. Okay, not present. Uh, members, we also have a number of individuals mostly in support, some with comments. Uh, only two have indicated they will be available today. First up, we have James Lindvall with comments.
Lindvall. Hello, thank you, thank you. Yes, Lindvall, thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, thank you for this opportunity. Uh, my name is James Lindvall. I'm here to participate in the legislative process. I'm a bail agent. I've bailed out approximately twenty five thousand people in the state of Hawaii since nineteen eighty. Before that, I was a pretrial release worker. I released about two thousand people on their own recognizance. And I would like to, uh, quote Nelson Mandela, who said that is, it was, it, it is said that no one truly knows a nation until one has been inside its jails. A nation should not be judged by how it treats its highest citizens, but its lowest. And that's why I'm here to participate in the legislative process. I am concerned about sixteen exceptions to the bill. I'm concerned about rushing into it. I'm concerned that Senate Bill twelve forty four, which in my view is superior, because I think that, uh, we need to have as many quivers, as many arrows in the quiver as possible to attack the prison population management problem. We need more ways to release, not less. And I'll stand by my testimony where I wrote seven pages on how I think, uh, corrections in the bill would make the bill better. And I make myself available for comments and, uh, questions. Uh, the last thing is that there are states who are, have done substantially similar items to what is, uh, told about in Senate draft, uh, two, Senate Bill twelve sixty Senate draft, uh, one, excuse me. Uh, Utah and California, uh, Utah is already changing up. Uh, so I would urge caution and, uh, let you know that, um, with bail, it's the families that are bailing people out. My clients are families of defendants. Uh, there are defendants who don't have any money. Uh, the Intake Service Center is one on one with them, with the judge. It's very, very difficult. Bondsman like me have an advantage. They have the family involved with skin in the game. Uh, yes, they're paying us a fee, but it does help the court move things along. And I don't think anybody opposes release on bail. Certainly no one in the H C R one thirty four task force opposed release on, uh, bail with, uh, secured sureties like bail agents. But this, this, okay, thank you, Mr. Chair. This, I'll remain for, uh, questions relevant to the bill. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Uh, last up, we have Meredith Buck in support. Okay, not present. Uh, members, any questions? Report.
Thank you. Mr. Lindvall, please.
Yes.
Uh, your citation of Robin Island, Nelson Mandela. I visited that, uh, island and I see the point of, of the least successful in life being very important for society. My question is this, how much money are we talking about in terms of the offenses that are not included in this bill versus what's the cost when they come to you as a bailsman or a bondsman? What's the usual amount that they have to put up versus what's the size of the, of the bond? I'm trying to look at some of the economics of this.
The majority of these cases are less than eleven thousand dollars, which, uh, based on the five to fifteen percent rates charged in Hawaii would be somewhere between five hundred and fifty dollars and eleven hundred dollars. That would be about where we're at, though there's a substantial number on this list that are below five thousand dollars, which would be, uh, two, three, four hundred dollars, depending on the time of day. If it's easy to get out of O triple C or the police department or, um, if the judiciary is able to get the twenty four hour bail system in effect, pursuant to Act one seventy nine like we had all hoped for, which is not yet in effect. So it's, um, it's about that, less than a thousand dollars is probably about it.
So five hundred to a thousand dollars?
Yes.
Of those offenses listed in the bill as exempted, what percentage of the offenses do they cover? In other words, how much of the bail that we're going to be excluding would cover how many offenses? Because there's a lot of exception, if it's, if it's sexual assault, if it's, if it's this, that, uh, it doesn't mention gambling, but of all the things, what, what percentage are we actually excluding? Or what's the, um, make it easier, what's the most common deal that you have to do, which this bill will eliminate?
Well, of course, it's, uh, things relevant to, uh, sex crimes and spouse abuse, but, uh, that's not really my concern. I don't really care how many, uh, how much, uh, how many of the cases they decriminalize. Uh, much of my testimony over the years has been towards citation release. I believe that the police department says citation release the majority of people because the duty judges on the weekend and on, uh, every calendar that you can look at online, the duty judges down there, they're releasing everybody that's already booked at, at Honolulu Police Department anyway. Very few people are held over and transferred to court. Uh, of eighteen thousand people arrested by H P D, there's only about four hundred and fifty people at Oahu Prison. Uh, that's less than three percent. Hawaii has high functioning, but, uh, pretrial release, uh, system in the state of Hawaii, we're among the top in the nation, probably among the top five already. We have every single means available to the judges to release. Uh, but the problem is, I think we could still do better. And I think that citation release of these people is probably preferred so that they don't have to be plugging up the, uh, valuable time officers take arresting and processing them at H P D, which can take several hours, only to be turned right around later when a judge looks at a list of people's names and releases them.
Well, there's not necessary, given what the judges are already doing?
Yes, that's what I'm saying. I'm more concerned about the sixteen exceptions. Yes, that's exactly what I'm saying.
Thank you, Mr. Lindvall. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Rep. Press.
Thanks, Vice Chair. E C L U.
Aloha.
Hi. I had a question for you about, well, first of all, if this bill were to become law, I just want to make sure I'm reading it correctly. It's still possible that somebody could be released on their own recognizance if they don't meet these, these, uh, requirements, right? It's not eliminating that as a possibility for others.
I don't, I don't believe that would be the effect, no.
Say again, please.
Sorry, I think the courts would still maintain their discretion to, to do R O R for other offenses, but I'll defer to the public defenders on that one.
On, uh, well, they're welcome to chime in if they disagree. On, um, point F, line seventeen, it talks about, one of the reasons somebody might not be released is defendant presents a risk of danger to any person or in the community. Okay, I guess that's fine, but including but not limited to a risk of infection. What is your group's position on that? Because that makes me think that we happen to be in a pandemic that that could apply to every single person, that nobody then should be released on their own recognizance because everybody poses a risk of infection to everybody. I mean, that just seems, is that something that you guys have commented on?
I'm so sorry. Could you give me the line number again? I'm.
Line seventeen, oh, boy.
Page.
That's the amended version that we passed out. They don't have that.
Oh. Never mind, you don't, forgive me. Sorry, Chair. Oh, never mind. So, uh, thank you very much. I had a question for Mark Tom. Press, that's Honolulu Prosecutor's Office, I think?
Yes.
Um, I, I, I'm just confused a little bit. You're testifying on behalf of Prosecutor Steve Alm, and he ran as saying, quote, he was the most progressive candidate in the race, but he's opposed to cash bail reform? What am I missing?
I think what the department's position is, is if they, you can't just get rid of the system in place without replacing it with a system. Um, so I think his position is, what is that system that is going to replace? You know, if, if they want to move into a different direction. I think the department's position is, what is that position going to? What is that new, um, system going to look like? And how is that gonna, and how does that interact, uh, with the court system? So I don't think the, uh, the department is opposed, um, to different types of bail reform or pretrial reform. However, it's just, the devils are in the detail on what that system would look like.
All right. Well, it sounds like opposition to me, but thank you. Thank you, Chair. Sorry about that.
Members, any other questions? Okay, not moving on to S B two, three, two relating to littering. We have one testifier, Hawaii Food Industry Association in support. Okay, I guess we have no testifiers. We'll move on to S B twelve eighty six, making an appropriation to the Office of the Prosecuting Attorney for Hawaii County. We have one testifier, hopefully, County of Hawaii Prosecuting Prosecutor's Office in support.
Good afternoon, Chair Nakashima, Vice Chair Matayoshi, Members of the Committee, Hawaii County Prosecuting Attorney Keldon Walden testifying in strong support of Senate Bill one two eight six. I stand on our written testimony and I would like to briefly add that last year our office was allocated just under four hundred thousand dollars in C C P funding, which is used to retain eight salary positions, including, uh, two positions for attorneys and investigator, two legal assistants and three clerical support staff. I'm here to answer any questions that you may have and hope for the opportunity to testify.
Okay, thank you. Members, any questions? I'm seeing none. Moving on to S B nine, six, nine, S D two relating to animal fur products. First up, we have D C C A with comments.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, Members of the Committee, Kat Awokuni-Kolon on behalf of D C C A. Uh, you have our comments of, I stand on them. We appreciate the intent. We did request, you know, should this measure move in this particular, um, composition that, uh, the committee consider an appropriation to enable D C C A to meaningfully participate. Uh, just a reminder that we are specially funded. Thank you very much for the opportunity.
Yeah, thank you. Next up, we have Department of Agriculture in opposition.
Good afternoon, Chair, Committee Members. Morrisata on behalf of the Department of Agriculture. The department stands on its, uh, written testimony in, in opposition and primarily the point being that, um, our department does not have jurisdiction or, um, we do not regulate, um, animal products. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Animal Rights Hawaii in support. If not present. Except we have the Humane Society of the United States in support.
Thank you, Chair, Vice Chair and Members of the Committee. My name is Lindsay Beer-Hylek. I am the Hawaii State Director for the Humane Society of the United States. Um, I'd first like to thank you very much for the opportunity to testify again in front of your committee in strong support of a fur ban in Hawaii. As the Hawaii State Director, it is my honor to work with the state's legislators and the community to fight against the worst forms of animal cruelty here in Hawaii and elsewhere. And this bill is an example of just that. Unfortunately, there is simply no way to humanely produce fur and awareness to this cruel, to the cruel practices inherent in the industry is growing. The cruelty, along with the environmental destruction and COVID nineteen related public health risks, is exactly why this bill is crucial right now. Concern for animal welfare continues to grow in Hawaii and across the states and consumers increasingly want products that don't involve animal cruelty. Companies all over the world are responding by aligning their policies with their customers' values and announcing fur free policies. Hawaii now has the chance to take a similar stand against the immense harm inflicted by the fur industry. For all of these reasons, we respectfully ask that the members of the committee support the passage of S B nine, six, nine. Thank you again for this opportunity and I'm available for any questions.
Okay, thank you. Next up, we have the Natural Fibers Alliance in opposition.
Hey, good, uh, good afternoon, everyone on the committee. My name is Mike Brown.
My name is Mike Brown. I'm the head of Sustainability and Public Affairs with the Natural Fibers Alliance. We oppose this bill uh for several reasons, as was mentioned and highlighted uh by the Department of Agriculture and Direct, excuse me, Department of Commerce, then being uh directly opposed to this bill. The question has to be, who wants this? Who wants to see this? What members of the Hawaii uh community are are pushing and encouraging this, aside from the individuals that are on this on this call now? Uh, as it relates to fur farming, the cases of coronavirus on fur farms in the United States are also far less than that's uh than that would, that which was experienced in uh in Europe. Only nineteen incidences have occurred on American farms compared to three hundred and seventeen in Europe. Uh, farms um have increased biosecurity measures during this pandemic, which have added an additional layer of protection that will continue to grow in the future. Uh, this bill is based on flawed logic. There've been more outbreaks of coronavirus among cats and dogs, seventy-two, than there have been among me. Now, that's been quoted from Nature Magazine uh the issue in March. Uh, under the logic of this bill, should we not also shut down animal shelters and rescues as well? How about even ban pet adoption? Um, most people uh would see this bill as an overkill. Uh, they'd also see this as overregulation on a already highly regulated product and somewhat of an infringement on fashion and personal choices. Uh, I want to emphasize that this bill is not about public health, uh which is highlighted during the introduction, but this legislation is being pushed by those who simply want to shut down the fur industry. Um, they don't think people should be allowed to produce or buy fur or leather, wool, cashmere, silk, and other derived fibers. The reality is, this bill uh would would, in essence, push the government further into our respective lives. I think at this point in time, we've seen enough, enough is enough. The government should take a step back uh and focus more on this pandemic, coronavirus relief, et cetera, as opposed to moving into what individuals wear. Um, this is also um a slippery slope. I mean, I think that's been stated time and time again, that first it's fur, next it'll be, you know, what we decide to eat, you know, whether that be beef, cow, chicken, et cetera, as well as leather and wool. So with that being said, I've submitted uh my testimony. Please take a look at that when you get a chance. Uh, once again, we at the Natural Fibers Alliance and Environmental Justice Coalition are opposed to this for the reasons stated uh both earlier uh as well as the reasons stated by the Department of Agriculture as well as Commerce. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Next up, we have Retail Merchants of Hawaii in opposition.
Aloha, and thank you for this opportunity to testify. We will stand on our testimony in strong opposition to this measure. Mahalo.
Yeah, thank you, members. We have a number of individuals submitting testimony in support, mostly in support, couple in opposition and with comments. Two are available for testimony today. First up, we have P J Smith in support.
Thank you, Chair Nakashima, Vice Chair Matayoshi, and Committee members. My name is P J Smith. I'm the Director of Fashion Policy for the Humane Society of the United States. On behalf of our supporters across Hawaii, we urge you to vote yes on S B nine six nine. We very much appreciate your time today. S B nine six nine is essentially the same as companion bill H B thirty-two, which this committee passed unanimously just a month ago. We'd like to offer a few technical amendments that preserves and provides congruency for this measure. They can be found in my written testimony. As just one example, a common, a comma uh should be removed between raccoon and dogs since raccoon dogs is a species commonly killed for its fur. There are a few other technical amendments like that, which again is mostly for the sake of clarity and consistency that we hope you'll consider. As well, we are Kanalua on enforcement placement and defer to the Chair and the Committee to find the proper mechanism for that. Again, we very much appreciate your time, and we hope you'll support nine six nine. Uh, I'm available if you have any questions. Thank you.
Good, thank you. Last up, we have someone whose name I'm going to pre-apologize for butchering, the the Lalo, because
Bezala, no, thank you. Sorry to cut you off. I go by Bez, it's easier. Um, my name is Bezala Stern or Bez, Kelly Drive and Warren, L L P. Uh, we are the law firm that represents the International Fur Federation, Fur Commission USA, and the Fur Information Council of America. Collectively, I F F Vika and S C USA represent the global fur industry, including the tens and thousands of thousands of small businesses and workers in the U S whose livelihoods directly or indirectly depend on the fur industry. Now, I I I'll stand on our written testimony, and I'm available if there are any questions. Uh, I'll be happy to answer. I'll just make make one point. Um, I F F Vika and F U S C USA stand united in their opposition to to S B nine six nine as written because, as you've heard, it's bad policy, but but bad policy or not, S B nine sixty-nine is almost certainly unconstitutional. You know, uh H S U S has has sponsored or or ghostwritten uh bills like this throughout the country. Um, this is actually, uh, they've taken this one even further than, and they've they failed almost uniformly because because people realize that that they're bad policy. But this one actually takes takes uh takes it even a step further. It uh H the the bill S S B nine sixty-nine wouldn't simply ban the manufacture or sale of of fur products i- in the state of Hawaii. It would a- actually ban the importation of fur into Hawaii for the purposes of sale uh or resale. So if somebody goes to the mainland and they they buy a fur coat, you could be, you could be criminally charged if you take it back on the plane with you to Hawaii. Not only is is that sort of incredible overreach, it's also unconstitutional. It's a, it's a very, very clear dormant commerce clause violation. Dormant Commerce Clause means that the uh that people, that a state cannot prohibit goods that are manufactured in another state from being sold in that state. Uh, and I, just before I end, and and again, I'm happy to to answer questions. Uh, I I I would like to note that uh there's a similar, a similar um uh stat, a similar statute uh banning uh alligator uh products was was passed uh in California, and uh there were similar dormant commerce clause and related issues that that were raised, and uh and the statute was was uh was litigated, and it was enjoined, and it cost the state of California a lot of money. Uh, and you know, a- at the end of the day, they they were right back where they started, except you, they had to waste a lot of money on the statute, and I really hope Hawaii doesn't have to go through this.
Thank you, members, any questions? Report.
Mr. Stern, are you saying that there's other or very few states that have actually passed a bill similar to this or bills such as exactly this?
Uh, so no bill has has, no state has passed a bill any uh that goes this far with the importation. The state of California has passed a bill uh last year that does not become effective for another few years. Uh, uh, that would ban the manufacturer or sale of fur. That um that and that, but that actually brings up another good point, that the the uh the timing in this bill is is a lot more expedited than the California bill. And the California bills, it was pushed, the timing was pushed back because people believe it's going to be amended to 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 be to be um to be limited even more so. The H S U S has provided similar uh draft legislation around the country. Uh, you know, and you know, I've I've testified uh along with along with P J uh on the other side uh about about this uh in many states, and uh and every state other than California has has voted down this legislation or it's been stalled in committee.
California is the only one that has voted it up.
That's correct.
Okay, uh, I have a question, Chair, for the Retail Merchants Association. I think it's uh Miss uh
Yes.
Yamaki.
Yes.
What's the state of the art of the fur trade in Hawaii? People wearing it, manufacturing it? I haven't seen any fur for a long, long time. I thought, being that you're in touch with all the retailers, give us the state of the art of fur trade, importation or wearing of it, fashion, et cetera, in Hawaii.
We are, we have seen people, especially um the visitors who come in and buy fur things. People think fur is like fur coats or fur hats, but you know, there's a lot of other things that have fur on them, whether it's shoes or hair clips or um, you know, tassels or whatever it is. Um, there's a lot of fur trim and things like that that are being sold. And you know, for those that are resellers, especially, you know, when you go and donate um to your goods to these um charities, they may not know what exactly is fur because a lot of this stuff, um, you know, the fake fur kind of looks real too. So that's something we also have a concern about.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you.
Members, any other questions? Uh, very briefly, P J, I know we spoke before, can you briefly tell us how much uh fur is sold in Hawaii every year?
Sure, thank you, Rep. Matayoshi. Um, start my video. Uh, we did look, we can look at imports going into Hawaii, and I think uh last year there was two thousand dollars of fur imports going into Hawaii the year before. It was around thirty thousand pre-pandemic, so not a whole lot.
Good, thank you.
Thanks.
Uh, moving on to S B eight seven three, S B one relating to contested cases. We have one testifier today, D H L in support.
Uh, I'm a vice chair, uh Chair, and members of the Department stands uh upon its testimony in strong support of this bill.
Okay, thank you, members, any questions? Seeing none, moving on to S B thirteen fifty, S B one relating to state government. First up, we have the Office of Elections with comments.
Thank you, the Office of Elections was standing at work to testimony providing comments.
Yeah, thank you. Next up, we have Common Cause Hawaii with comments.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the Committee, Sandy Ma for Common Cause Hawaii. We stand on our written comments with concerns about the process for this bill, S B thirteen fifty. We also uh question um this bill. The Standing Committee report notes that uh the maps should be reflected in the short form reporting notice, and it's not. And so we're wondering why that's also not included in the um S D one for S B thirteen fifty. Um, you could read my uh testimony, and so I will not take up any more time with my comments. Uh, if you have any questions, I'm available to answer. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Last up, we have an individual, Stanley Rorig with comments.
Uh, Mr. Chairman and Committee members, uh, my name's Stan Rorig. I am an attorney in Hilo, where I practiced law for the last fifty-five years. Uh, ten years ago, I was involved in the reapportionment effort to add a new senator to the County of Hawaii. Uh, at that time, uh, we had a crash course in uh figuring out what you have to go through to properly elect uh people who are voters uh and so forth. And we had a multitude of public hearings all over this island. And I foresee in this, looking at this legislation that came over from the Senate, that uh the House of Representatives of the state should be very careful in this area because there is a state Supreme Court uh decision on the last time that we went through the process, and I attached that to my uh testimony, and I made a few cut and paste of parts of the decision. But the bottom line is that uh we cannot allow people in the armed services to vote in our elections if they're uh if they are here on assignment in Hawaii, but they're domiciled elsewhere. And there's a specific provision in our Hawaii State Constitution that forbids that. And that's what the fear is in looking at this bill is that it it seeks, among other things, to uh clarify the term permanent residence. The only, the only lack of clarity could be that the Supreme Court would somehow find it's constitutional to have armed service members vote. Uh, some districts in the state of Hawaii are very high in uh resident armed forces, and uh we're very happy to have them. However, they're not domiciled in Hawaii. They're domiciled in their uh home state or wherever uh they list as their home state. And so that is the problem with this, with this uh bill. The other thing I would add
Rorig, that's been two minutes, if you can, if you could conclude your testimony.
Okay, thank you. Uh, I would just add that if you're going to fund outside counsel for Oahu, you should fund outside counsel for all the counties because it's the same burden, and these cases are very involved. They take a lot of time, and the contests are direct uh entry to the state Supreme Court. You go there, you don't go to Circuit Court first, you go straight to the Supreme Court. And so it's very time consuming and rather complicated. Uh, thank you very much for giving the opportunity, and uh I'm happy to answer any questions you folks may have on this issue, and uh I appreciate you folks taking up this matter.
Thank you, members, any questions? Right, seeing none, we're moving on to a last bill on the agenda, S B four two one, S D one relating to vacancies. We have one testifier today, Office of Elections in support.
Thank you, the Office of Elections was standing on its written testimony in support, and be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, members, any questions? Yep, seeing none, will recess for decision-making, recess.
Breaking my microphone. Members, reconvening for decision making. Tuesday, March sixteenth, room three two five. First up is Senate Bill thirteen thirty-three, Senate Draft two, relate to Uniform Controlled Substances Act. Chair will note that in order to be consistent with the Federal Controlled Substances Act, paragraph two, three, and four, on pages four and five, should be deleted. And in its place, put in a new number two, reading hemp, including compound mixtures or preparations that fall within the definition of hemp from tetra cannibal, cannibaloids under section schedule one. Technical amendments need for clarity, consistency, and style. Members, any questions or comments? Seeing none, Vice Chair, as amended.
Chair's recommendation is to pass SB one three three three, ST two with amendments. Chair and Vice Chair vote aye. Representative Ichiyama? Representative Kobayashi? Excused. Representative LaPresti? Representative Lowen? Representative Lowen? Rep. McKelvey? Rep. Nakamura? Rep. Takumi? Rep. Todd? Rep. Tokioke? Rep. Ward? Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you very much. Senate Bill thirteen twenty-three, Senate Draft two. Chair will note that the bill already contains a defective effective date. We will further defective, defective to July first, thirty twenty-one. Members, any questions or comments? Seeing none, Vice Chair, as amended.
Chair's recommendation is to pass SB thirteen twenty-three, ST two with amendments, noting the presence, sorry, noting the previously excused members. Any members voting with reservations? Any members voting no? Chair recommendation is adopted.
Thank you very much. Members, SB thirty-two, three twenty-three, two thirty-eight, sorry, gang, this looks like Senate Draft two, related to the Office of Foreign Affairs. Chair's recommendation is that we substitute the language of Senate Bill two thirty-eight with Senate Bill nine eighty-one, which we heard earlier, and defect date that July first, thirty twenty-one. Members, any questions or comments? Seeing none. Vice Chair, as amended.
Chair's recommendation is to pass SB two three eight, ST two with amendments, noting the previously excused members. Any members voting with reservations? Any members voting no? Chair recommendation is adopted.
Thank you. SB fourteen oh nine, relating to training and native Hawaiian rights. Chair's recommendation is that on page one, on lines four, seven, and eight, add to native Hawaiian, native Hawaiian and Hawaiian to be consistent throughout. On page five, line six, note that the course within the required time period. And on page six, line twenty-one, appointment or reappointment. And defect date to July first, thirty twenty-one. Members, any questions or comments?
I have one comment, Chair.
Vice Chair.
Just as previously discussed, I would love to have the recordings available and made, made available to those who are not able to make the in-person trainings. I think that'd add a lot of flexibility for them to still get credit, just like we do with attorneys.
Okay, yeah, let's put language in effectuating that. Members, any other questions or comments? Okay, seeing none, Vice Chair, as amended.
Chair's recommendation is to pass SB fourteen oh nine, ST two with amendments, noting the previously excused members. Any members voting with reservations? Any members voting no? Chair recommendation is adopted.
Okay, thank you. Senate Bill seven six five, Senate Draft two, related to operating a vehicle under the influence of intoxicant. Chair's recommendation is that we would, for those those violators that do not own a car, have the interlock requirements dropped there after two years. So if you don't have a car, you don't have to buy one, but after two years, the violation drops dead. Also, I think there needs to be clarity on the intent on page sixteen, line seven to twelve. It talks about first offense and, or the first offense after ten years, and you should clean that section up to indicate that it is the first offense or a, or an offense that had not occurred within ten year, or for someone who is a reoffender after ten years. Other technical non-substance amendments for clarity, consistency, and style. Bill does contain a defect date, and we will further defect it to July first, thirty twenty-one. Members, any questions or comments? Seeing none, Vice Chair, as amended.
Chair's recommendation is to pass SB seven six five, ST two with amendments, noting the previously excused members. Any members voting with reservations? Any members voting no? Chair recommendation is adopted.
Thank you very much. Senate Bill four five nine, Senate Draft one, related to firearms. Chair is unconvinced of the public benefit to this measure, and so we will defer this. Senate Bill three eight five, Senate Draft one, related to the Uniform Trust Code. Chair's recommendation is technical non-substantive amendments for clarity, consistency, and style. Okay. Members, any questions or comments? Seeing none, Vice Chair, as amended.
Chair's recommendation is to pass SB three eight five, ST one with amendments, noting the previously excused members. Any members voting with reservations? Any members voting no? Chair recommendation is adopted.
Thank you very much. SB eight twenty-nine, Senate Draft one, relating to abuse of a family or household member. Vice Chair is concerned about this measure and so recommends deferral at this time. SB twelve sixty, Senate Draft one, related to criminal pretrial reform. Members, we have circulated the proposed House Draft one. Any questions or comments? Or Vice Chair, did you have any comments today? We can defect date it to December, July first, thirty twenty-one. Members, any other questions or comments?
Just a comment. So we, we worked, this draft that you have in front of you is, we did work with OHA, Public Defenders, Prosecutors, AG's office, pretty much everybody to do a combination of a lot of things. So this is kind of a hybrid of a lot of those.
Okay, Vice Chair, as amended.
Chair's recommendation is to pass SB twelve sixty, ST one with amendments. Noting the previously excused member. Any members voting with reservations? Any members voting no?
No.
No vote. Representative Ward, any other members voting no? Chair recommendation is adopted.
Okay, SB two three two, relating to litter. Chair's concerned about the high level of penalties, and we'll defer this measure for the time being. Senate Bill twelve eighty-six, Senate Draft one, related to appropriations for the Office of Prosecuting Attorney. Chair's recommendation is that we defect date this further to July first, thirty twenty-one. Members, any other questions or comments?
Thank you. I appreciate it. Support your recommendations with reservations. I just feel that the state paying for county positions now is highly unusual, especially given our current fiscal situation, and you know, I'm sure there's a lot of other counties prosecutor offices that could use this kind of support too, so WR for now.
Okay, thank you very much. Members, any other questions or comments? Seeing none, Vice Chair, as amended.
Chair's recommendation is to pass SB twelve eighty-six, ST one with amendments, noting the previously excused member. Any members voting with reservations besides Representative McKelvey? Any members voting no? Chair recommendation is adopted.
Okay, thank you very much. Members, Senate Bill nine six nine, Senate Draft two, related to animal fur products. Chair's recommendation is that we change the responsibility from this, from the Department of Agriculture to the Department of the Attorney General, and that we adopt the recommendations of the U.S. Humane Society. Members, any questions or comments? Seeing none, Vice Chair, as amended.
Chair's recommendation is to pass SB nine six nine, ST two with amendments, noting the previously excused member. Any member voting with reservations? Any members voting no? Representative Ward, no vote. Any other members voting no? Chair recommendation is adopted.
Okay, thank you very much. Senate Bill eight seven three, Senate Draft one, related to contested cases. Members, Chair recommends technical amendments need for clarity, consistency, and style, and to further defect date it from July first, thirty twenty-one. Members, any questions or comments? Seeing none, Vice Chair, as amended.
Chair's recommendation, recommendation is to pass SB eight seven three, ST one with amendments, noting the previously excused member. Any member voted, members voting with reservations? Any members voting no? Chair recommendation is adopted.
Thank you very much. Senate Bill thirteen fifty, Senate Draft one, related to state government. Chair, Chair has some recommendations for this on page sixty-nine, page six, line nine. Instead of the census language, we will replace it as defined by Solomon versus Abercrombie, one twenty-six Hawaii, two eighty-three in twenty twelve. On page six, nine eleven, in accordance with one point, one dash two eight point five public on page eleven, line three, after repealing, indicate provided for that section twelve dash two point five Hawaii statute, so be reenacted to the effective date of this act. Also, for the committee report, I'd like to note the Attorney General's concerns regarding the constitutionality of the original language in section four, article four of the Constitution, and section six, article five of the Constitution. Members, any questions or comments? Seeing none, Vice Chair, as amended. Oh, I'm sorry.
Chair's recommendation. Chair's recommendation-
Comments? Your representative, McKel- Your representative, McEl, um, no press.
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to note on behalf of my district. I do hope that this body in the legislature, state legislature, does look at addressing how reapportionment works, especially regarding non-permanent residents, as we, we tend to define people who are active duty and sometimes even recently active military people and students. I moved here in nineteen ninety-nine, and I was never counted as a permanent resident until two thousand and eleven. Lived here for eleven, twelve years without ever being counted. And for most of that time, I had intended on staying here, and I'm obviously still here today. My district in Eva Beach has one of the largest concentrations of active-duty military and veterans in the state. And by all intents and purposes, our area is treated like a military base. And there's a reason that the West Side where I represent, part, part of the place where I represent, is underfunded, lacks infrastructure, because we lack representation in this body. Because we have to represent a much larger portion of the population who has demands, who has needs for roads, for schools. And because we don't have enough voices representing that population who live here, and sometimes for ten years, we, we lack, our community tends to lack the infrastructure other communities have. And I just wanted to make that statement for the record, and I hope that we do revisit that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Members, any other questions or comments? Seeing none, Vice Chair, as amended.
Chair's recommendation is to pass S B thirteen fifty, S D one with amendments, noting the previously excused members, any members voting with reservations. Any members voting no. Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you very much. S B four twenty-one, Senate Draft one, relate to vacancies. Chair's intent here is to replace it with House Bill eleven seventeen, which we passed earlier this year, which was replacement of vacancies of legislative and U.S. Senate vacancies with a special election. Members, any questions or comments? Seeing none, Vice Chair, as amended.
Chair's recommendation is to pass S B four two one, S D one with amendments, noting the previously excused member, any members voting with reservations. Any members voting no. Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Okay, thank you very much. Senate Bill thirteen twenty-seven, Senate Draft one, relate to statutory revisions, amending or repealing various provisions of the Hawaii revised statutes. Chair's recommendation is that we pass this as is. Members, any questions or comments? Seeing none, Vice Chair, as is.
Chair's recommendation is to pass S B thirteen twenty-seven, S D one, as is, noting the previously excused member, any members voting with reservations. Any members voting no. Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Okay, members, sorry, Chair, announced that this is from, this is the decision-making from our March twelfth agenda. Senate Bill three eight four, relate to tax appeals. Chair's recommendation to be passed this out, will defect date July first thirty twenty-one. Members, any questions or comments? Seeing none, Vice Chair.
Chair's recommendation is to pass S B three eight four with amendments, noting the previously excused member, any members voting with reservations. Any members voting no. Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you very much. Senate Bill four twelve, relate to operating a vehicle under the influence of intoxicant. Chair's recommendation is that we adopt the Honolulu Prosecutor's Amendment to two nine one E dash fifteen, and defect dated July first thirty twenty-one. Members, any questions or comments? Seeing none, Vice Chair, as amended.
Chair's recommendation is to pass S B four twelve with amendments, noting the previously excused member, any members voting with reservations. Any members voting no. Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Okay, thank you very much. Senate Bill four thirteen, Senate Draft one, relate to violation of privacy. Chair will note that if the bill does already contain a defective, effective date, and so further defective to July first thirty twenty-one. Members, any questions or comments? Vice Chair, as amended.
Chair's recommendation is to pass S B four one three, S D one with amendments, noting the previously excused member, any members voting with reservations. Representative McKelvey with reservations, any other members voting with reservations. Any members voting no. Chair Nakamura, I'm sorry, Rep. Nakamura, voting no. Any other members voting no. Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Okay, thank you very much. Senate Bill six thirty, Senate Draft one, relate to child support enforcement. Members, you did pass a similar bill earlier in the session. Chair's recommendation, we defect date this July first thirty twenty-one. Members, any questions or comments? Seeing none, Vice Chair, as amended.
Chair's recommendation is to pass S B six thirty, S D one with amendments, noting the previously excused member, any members voting with reservations. Rep. La Pressey, reservations. Any other members voting with reservations. Any members voting no. Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Okay, thank you. Senate Bill five four eight, Senate Draft one, relate to elections by mail. There's a number of amendments that were suggested in testimony from the Office of Elections on Section twenty-two. They wanted to change the validity of the ballots up to the seventh day following the election, so we will do that. Honolulu Elections Division wanted us to include in this bill a provision from House Bill two oh one, which passed out earlier in Section three, adding voter service centers and additional service centers of varying times and dates. Beyond that, I am proposing in Section eleven that we specify that election results also be reported by precinct. That we create a new embody election proclamation. H B one nine nine into a new section. So that this is where the county clerks issued the proclamation of the different service centers and folding box sec- availability and time. Including common causes. Amendments proposed to Section seven, restoring paragraph D, page fourteen, which was deleted in this bill, and deleting references to Section eleven fourteen, Section twenty-one, and Section twenty-one be deleted. Also, noting the Community Alliance of Prisons request that we also include the Hawaii Paro- Paroling Authority as a agency responsible for letting its they're servicing people, the dates and availability of election participation. Okay, that's a lot. Members, any questions or comments? Okay, Vice Chair, as amended.
Chair's recommendation is to pass S B five four eight, S D one with lots of amendments, any members, or noting the previously excused members, any members voting with reservations. Any members voting no. Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Senate Bill six thirty-five, relate to elections. Members, we will, Chair's recommendations, we defer this matter. House Bill eight ninety-one, Senate Draft two, relate to the Hawaiian Homes Commission Act. To in Section one, instead require annual report to the legislature regarding beneficiary consultations conducted during the past year and outcomes and results from these consultations. And delete Section three from the bill, and defect date it July first thirty twenty-one. Members, any questions or comments? Seeing none, Vice Chair, as amended.
Chair's recommendation is to pass S B eight nine one, S D two with amendments, noting the previously excused member, any members voting with reservations. Any members voting no. Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Okay, thank you very much. Members, Senate Bill nine eighty-one, Senate Draft two, relate to the Office of Foreign Affairs. Chair's recommendation is that we replace this measure with Senate Bill two thirty-eight, which also addresses the elections of the Office of Foreign Affairs. Members, any questions or comments? Seeing none, Vice Chair, as amended.
Chair's recommendation is to pass S B nine eight one, S D two, amendments, noting the previously excused member, any members voting with reservations. Any members voting no. Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Senate Bill ten forty-two, Senate Draft one, relate to covered offender registration. Chair's recommendations, that we pass this out with technical amendments needed for clarity, consistency, and style, and defect date it July first thirty twenty-one. Members, any questions or comments? Seeing none, Vice Chair, as amended.
Chair's recommendation is to pass S B ten forty-two, S D one with amendments, any member, noting the previously excused member, any members voting with reservations. Any members voting no. Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you very much. Senate Bill eight to eight, relate to divorce. Chair's recommendations passes out with technical amendments needed for clarity, consistency, and style, and defect dated July first thirty twenty-one. Members, any questions or comments? Seeing none, Vice Chair, as amended.
Chair's recommendation is to pass S B eight two eight with amendments, noting the previously excused member, any members voting with reservations. Any members voting no. Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Okay, Senate Bill two nine four, Senate Draft one, relate to property forfeiture. Chair's recommendations that we keep Section three. Provide technical amendments needed for clarity, consistency, and style, and defect date it to July first thirty twenty-one. Members, any questions or comments? Seeing none, Vice Chair, as amended.
Chair's recommendation is to pass S B one five one with amendments, noting the previously excused member, any members voting with reservations. Any members voting no. I'm sorry.
Did we skip something? I'm sorry.
Okay, let's take the vote for S B two nine four, S D one. Chair's recommendation is to pass with amendments. Noting the previously excused member, any members voting with reservations on S B two nine four. Any members voting no. Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Okay, thank you very much. Sorry, members, going back to Senate Bill one five one, relate to state, statewide traffic code. Chair's recommendation is technical amendments needed for clarity, consistency, and style, and defect date it July first thirty twenty-one. Members, any questions or comments? Seeing none, Vice Chair, as amended.
Okay, backed by popular demand, Chair's recommendation is to pass S B one five one with amendments, noting the previously excused members, any members voting with reservations. Any members voting no. Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you very much. And then Senate Bill seven fifteen, Senate Draft two, relate to issues of special purpose revenue bonds to assist fuel. Chair's recommendation is that we pass this out, will defect date July first thirty twenty-one. Members, any questions or comments? Seeing none, Vice Chair, as amended.
Chair's recommendation is to pass S B seven one five, S D two with amendments, noting the previously, previously excused member, any member voting with reservations. Any members voting no. Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Okay, thank you very much, members. We will have a pre-bill hearing on Thursday, and we'll be deluged the following week. Understanding recess is recess.